Order, we please rise for the intention of our pledge allegiance to fight our country. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity that we have your decision. Lord, we ask that you guide and you bless this city commission and give us the knowledge and wisdom that you are in us to make the decisions that are the best interest of our citizens. Please be with us all on Friday as we leave here today and be with all of our city employees and first responders. For our essentially asking in this precious heaven and name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on here this evening. First this evening will be our budget hearing. So we'll do have the second reading and public hearing to adopt our proposed budgets and bill rates for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Yes, go ahead. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Yes, Mayor, ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two and ordinance letting tax upon all taxable property within the city of Winter Garden, Florida for the tax year beginning on October one, two thousand twenty-three and ending on September thirty, two thousand twenty-four. The city commission of the city of Winter Garden hereby adopts establishments and lettings and military rate or ad valorem taxation of real intangible personal property within the city of Winter Garden for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-three and ending on September thirty, two thousand twenty-four at the rate of four point five zero 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 mils. That's four dollars and fifty cents for every one thousand dollars of assessed valuation upon the assessed valuation of property within the corporate limits of the city of Winter Garden, Florida. This military rate is greater than the rollback rate of four point zero nine zero eight mils by ten percent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is the second reading for our military status proposing this whole thing and recommending it, and we have any questions, Mayor?
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-three and ordinance appropriating and allocating all revenue and funds of the city of Winter Garden, Florida for the tax year beginning on October one, two thousand twenty-three and ending on September thirty, two thousand twenty-four, whereas it is anticipated that there will be available for use and dispersment from the general funds of the city revenue in the following amounts. Collection of ad valorem in the amount of twenty-four million eighty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Revenue other than ad valorem, fifty-eight million six hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars for total revenues available for expenditures of eighty-two million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor.
Second reading of general fund revenues for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Staff recommends approval. Have any questions, Mayor?
Questions from the commission? Once again, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to comment. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Move to approve. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-three, staff recommendations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried unanimously. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-four.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-four and ordinance appropriating and allocating all revenue and funds of the community redevelopment agency, CRA, at the city of Winter Garden, Florida for the tax year beginning on October one, two thousand twenty-three and ending on September thirty, two thousand twenty-four, whereas it is anticipated that there will be available for use and dispersment from the CRA funds of the city revenue in the following amounts. Collection of ad valorem in the amount of one million five hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and revenue other than ad valorem in the amount of one million three hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars for total revenues available for expenditures in the amount of two million nine hundred and seventeen thousand eighty-one dollars.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor.
This is the second reading of the CRA. The CRA advisory board has approved the budget unanimously and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? This is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Move to approve ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Winter Garden authorizing the appropriations of city funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four in accordance with Article three, Section thirty, subsection five of the city charter of the city of Winter Garden, Florida and Florida statute one six six point two four one for the purpose of fulfilling the financial obligations of the city.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor.
The proposed budget before you tonight is the same as the first reading. We have not made any changes and we recommend approval.
Any questions from the commissions? Once again, this is a public hearing. We will open if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mayor. For regular reading, we have the approval of the minutes from our regular reading minutes on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. They have been distributed. Any additional solutions, corrections? Need a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next will be the minutes from our ethics workshop on September the fourteenth. Once again, oh, I thought you were going to say September. Okay. September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. They have been distributed. Any additional solutions, corrections? We need a motion.
So move.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Second reading of public hearing, proposed ordinance, ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, rezoning approximately eleven point three four plus minus acres located at Stony Brook West Parkway, parcel ID thirty-six twenty-two twenty-seven zero 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 eight five, generally located south of State Road four twenty-nine, west of Whitney Road, east of Scarlet Sage Court, and north of Stony Brook West Parkway from C dash two, arterial commercial district to PCD planned commercial development, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is a request for PCD rezoning of property located on the northwest side of Stony Brook West Parkway and Windermere Road. The property is eleven point three four acres in size and is currently zoned C two and has a commercial future land use definition. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to PCD in order to prevent the development of thirteen new commercial buildings with a combined total square footage of eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet that will house medical office, office, and retail uses. As mentioned at the previous hearing, this project was designed in close coordination with the community members and neighborhood groups who desired an attractive neighborhood scale commercial development that emphasized pedestrian comfort and safety. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Just a comment about the eight items.
That listed right here.
I'm sure Kelly's going to say something about this as well. Bring home the point. So we are, any more discussion with the developer on those items?
No, like I said in the last meeting, these are more items that can be addressed at the time of site plan approval, and I don't believe they submitted their site plan approval application yet.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak.
Good evening. Thank you. Would it be helpful to have my card?
If you give the name and address, please.
Sure, I will. Thank you. Hi, I'm Kelly Morphy. I'm a resident here in Winter Garden. My address is one four nine Blue Stone Circle. My esteemed neighbor, Mark Micho. He and I live together in the Westfield Lake subdivision, and we've been involved, Mark in part, other neighbors, in helping to protect this area of Winter Garden and ensure that that area near Lake Whitney Elementary and what is now the dentist office remains a great part of Winter Garden and becomes a space that we're very, very proud of. So I'm here speaking for the Sage Streets West Orange Coalition. It's a non-incorporated coalition of residents, business members, parents, who all want to see West Orange become a very safe, walkable, bikeable community where we also are promoting and supporting local business and ensuring that we all have the chance to enjoy a vibrant neighborhoods and vibrant community. Let me first say that this is a project that the city staff, your staff, have been incredibly collaborative in working with us and ensuring that the needs of the community and the community's well-being are foremost in the considerations. And in addition to Ms. Carson and Mr. Friedman, I also just want to say that Mr. Pash, Mr. Williams, everybody's been working really hard for at least, as far as I know, at least eleven years on making sure that this becomes a great place for Winter Gardens to be very proud of. A lot of time and effort, and in some cases money, have gone into protecting that area and keeping it primed for great development. And I'll say that, just so you understand what I'm here to, to make sure that the community is sharing with you is that, with a few caveats, this is a really good project. It's the type of project that is going to create an anchor for the intersection and ensure that it remains a place that we all want to go to as opposed to just a space to pass through in your car as fast as possible. We've been working against allowing cars to go through there as fast as possible because we want to make sure that remains a place for people, and this type of project can help do that. What we really like about this project and this proposed development is that it honors the ideals of a walkable suburban development to the extent that it can, given all the context. And we think that with the mix of uses, it's going to become the kind of place that, you know, we don't only want to drive to, but people who are, who live in the area will want to walk and bike to. And of course, with the baseball park right on the corner, we can see folks who might be there for a baseball game afterwards, walking across the street to the restaurant, getting some of their daily services and needs met there. And I've also imagined that someday my dad might be living at the, at the senior living facility down the road, and instead of us having to get into a single occupancy or a car together to drive to have coffee, we might be able to just walk to this corner and enjoy some time together. The buildings coming to the street as opposed to being hidden behind a sea of parking is very good for pedestrian bicycle scale, and we think that it's going to be really good for ensuring that there are a lot of customers and patrons at the business as well. And of course, the city and the developer have done a good job of ensuring that from the public right of way, from the street, there's good access for people on bikes and people who are walking. So these are, these are things to celebrate. And while there are many numerous benefits to the project, we just want to share, and thank you for having, having shared the eight points with the commissioners, but we do want to share that those, there are some caveats, and we're asking the city commission to embrace that as proposed, it's a good project and it won't be detrimental to the community, but with some additional improvements, it can be a fantastic project. And most of those improvements actually are under the purview of the city, not necessarily the developers. So we're asking you to, to consider these eight points. The eight recommendations are, I mean, we didn't come up with these in a vacuum. We actually did have a conversation with your consultant transportation engineer who identified some of these opportunities for improvement, and we're fully behind them. Couple of them, I think, already have been incorporated into the new drawings that I saw of the site plans, so there are additional drawings to come, but those looked, it looked as though those, some of our initial ideas have already been incorporated into the plan, so thank you for that. Two of the eight points, I just want to highlight here so that people can have an understanding of sort of the scale that we're talking about, the types of changes that we're talking about. What I believe is the most important is that at the roundabout where vehicles are exiting onto Stony Brook West, so heading west on Stony Brook West, they're leaving the roundabout, the vehicle speeds are a little bit too high, which causes two problems. Number one, if there is a conflict between a car and a person in the crosswalk there, higher vehicle speeds lead to worse outcomes. The second is that, and this is what we see on a more regular basis, is that when cars are coming out of that roundabout at such a high speed, they don't see the pedestrian trying to cross until they can't stop, and so it reduces the yield rates. So whereas a driver is required to yield to a pedestrian entering that crosswalk, they're going so fast that often they don't have time. And I bet if you did a traffic study, you would find that the yield rates at that one exit are not even fifty percent of what they are at the other roundabout exits. The yield rates on all other segments are really good. So the, the, the problem has been, you know, talked about for a couple of years, but I hadn't thought about what your consulting engineer recommended, which was to install a raised crosswalk there. It's not a small change, though, because then you have, you have to figure out what to do with the water, the runoff and the storm water. But raising the crosswalk there would have two really important impacts. One, you know that you have a lot of kids crossing there because of the elementary school. If you raise the crosswalk, it raises the kid or the pedestrian and puts them higher from the line of sight of the person driving, so it makes them more visible. And two is that a raised crosswalk absolutely requires that a driver slow down, and that would be a, a, a good control there to help make that more safe. If that's not fixed and this development goes in, the types of traffic that it's going to attract, which I think is great for business, also could put more pressure on that crossing and on that segment of the roundabout, and it could potentially have tragic consequences. We want to avoid that. So I want to highlight that one change. The other is just that there is a section where we would be adding a right turn lane to get into the development, and this is on Stony Brook West, heading west. So you've come through the roundabout and you're going to make a right, so you're going to turn north to go into the development, and there would be a dedicated right turn lane. And we think it's really important that that right turn lane be terminated by a physical barrier so that people who get a little bit anxious to go around the driver in front of them don't use the right turn lane as a passing lane. Not only would that be dangerous for drivers, but as you can imagine, if we have pedestrians in that area, which we anticipate there will be because it's going to be a great development, drawing people to it, we don't want any crazy maneuvering or dangerous behavior on the part of drivers. So we're recommending that where there's a pork chop island planned there, move it further out into the right of way so that someone using that right turn lane could not continue straight or use it as a, a passing lane, but instead that right turn lane absolutely ends, and thus all of the through traffic lines up in the through lane to go through as a, you know, a diligent and safe driver should. So those are the key items I wanted to bring to your attention. There were eight on the list. I extend that some of them are absolutely more feasible than others. If the city can't move forward or doesn't plan to move forward with all eight, we'd really like an opportunity to have a meeting to talk about why, what other solutions we might be able to adopt to keep that space really safe and really vibrant at the same time. This entire area around that intersection has, it's what we envisioned working with this city more than a decade ago. It's coming to life. It's happening, and we're so happy that the city has created a place where a great developer wants to come with a great project because that is what we've been looking for. So thank you for the opportunity to share those ideas about it, and thank you, Kelly and team for being such good stewards of the community interest on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, we will close the public hearing. And no other questions from the commission? Yes, sir.
So is there, with those two issues, I mean, we don't have to go through and ask to negotiate, but are there major issues with those, those two issues, Kelly?
I think one is definitely easier than the other. The extending of the pork chop, I don't think should be a problem at all. It's just kind of moving it. There's already a pork chop there, it's just a matter of moving it south. The crosswalk, the raised crosswalk, that's, that's entirely in the city's purview, so, you know, we'll be talking to the developer and kind of figuring out, you know, because that would be our responsibility to do, but that's definitely a conversation we will have going forward.
No offense, but pork chops are good for people that want to lay law. I watched a pickup truck in the day and it turned and it just went right over the top of the pork chop. I didn't even worry about either lane.
It was getting taller.
The only, the only way you'll stop them is to put some of those spikes up. Other than that, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, I just. I'm not.
Okay. Just a comment. So I want to thank Kelly, and it's, in this climate, we get a lot of folks that just don't want any development at all. It was very refreshing to hear, to work with Kelly and her other residents. We really do appreciate that. Good example of government, residents, and staff. I do want to thank staff, and we really did all the head lifting on this thing and it worked, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? We need a motion, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen.
Okay. Second. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Regular business. Recommendation to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Winter Garden and Orange County. Yes, Mayor?
Thank you. This is a request for an interlocal agreement between the city and Orange County. Two houses were recently built by the nonprofit group Homes in Partnership in, in Orange County On Flav area along Oak Street, which you can see here, located at five forty and five forty-six Oak Street. During that construction, a surveyor's error resulted in both houses being built in the wrong locations with the house at five forty-six Oak Street, which is that southern parcel, being partially constructed on the neighbor's property to the south at five fifty-seven Ninth Street, which is in the city. So I'll show you the result area. So as you can see, both of these houses were kind of built to skew and off their respective properties, including this one. This parcel right here, parcel three, is currently within the city of Winter Garden. Sticky wicket. To address this error, the property owner to the south agreed to sell a portion of their land, which you can see here, to the property to the north, and then vice versa here, so that neither structure would encroach into the adjacent property. In order to do this, both parcels would need to be annexed into the city, and then the required block configurations and variances would all be coiled up here in the city. The city and Orange County are entering into this interlocal agreement so that the county retains the authority to finish up the permitting for both lots and issue the certificates of occupancy since they started the permitting, we should probably end the permitting and complete it, after all of those zoning issues are addressed by the city. So with that, staff recommends approval of this interlocal agreement with Orange County. Happy to answer any questions.
Actually, the CEO is going to be annexed into the city.
So we are going to actually annex it first and then clean up all of the zoning issues in the city, and then they're going to go back and get their CEOs or the county.
Okay.
Well, somehow we don't have annexation anyway.
I have city water and sewer.
They are on city water, but they do have septic tanks that they've already installed. There's no sewer available in that particular area yet.
Somebody get Arizona emissions insurance? I don't see the shirt there. On the pop way.
Discount. Sure enough. Okay. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Winter Garden and Orange County.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mayor. National approved purchase new Panasonic projection system. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Staff requesting to replace our current projection system with a new Panasonic digital projection system. One of our current projectors has failed, it's no longer repairable, and in addition, that technology of our current system is over eight years old. The new system would be compatible with our current show formats that have already been produced, and will have improved 4K quality. The system will also provide a number of additional enhancement capabilities. We've received a quote for the new system from Alchemic Controls, which is the Panasonic distributor for this equipment, at a hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Just to give you a little history, our current projectors were purchased back in January of two thousand fifteen as part of a shared use agreement with the Garden Theater. At the time, there were four projectors purchased at a cost of three hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. Had to do a little digging back in some of our commission meeting minutes to, to find the information. That made them eighty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars more than the projectors we're buying now. Of those four projectors, one's still alive and mounted in the Garden Theater, and one is ours, which is still functional, but getting pretty weak. The old projectors were very expensive to maintain, they utilized high output bulbs, two in each projector. They were frequently requiring for replacement, and those were nine hundred dollars each for the bulbs. This new laser system utilizes a digital laser diode with an expected usable life of twenty thousand hours, so maintenance on these should come way down. These projectors obviously are used for sale of our events, Halloween, and we get the spider running across City Hall, the ghouls, and so on, and Christmas, family movie nights, SOBO events, and I think there's some consideration with the extended life of the projection, maybe using it for Music Fest as well. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
I didn't hear you mention the Super Bowl, so if you think about that, it's 4K. I'm good with this. The only thing I was asked, and I did look up for PK eighteen, or eighteen U units, KU unit, I did see some of them priced slightly less, around eighty thousand for the base unit as opposed to ninety-two thousand, but if this is.
Okay, these are forty, the base unit without a lens is forty-six thousand one eighty-seven.
Yeah.
And then with the lens, the lens is like thirteen thousand.
It was, I saw that break down.
Yeah.
But I'm good with this. Is that a motion, sir? That is a motion to approve for one hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Thank you.
I second that motion. You have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we were sort of guaranteed they would be here by Halloween, so.
Okay. Get here quick. Motion carried unanimously. Yes. Recommendation to approve purchase order for design services for permanent fire station twenty-one Bentley Architects.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Bentley Architects and Engineers are the selected firm to complete the final plans and specifications for the permanent fire station twenty-one. The design includes the civil, architectural, structural, mechanical, architectural, and landscape disciplines. Staff would recommend approving a work order for Bentley engineers and the amount of architects and engineers in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Any questions?
Ask this, sir, permission.
Are they going to cover errors and omissions? Yes, sir, I'm sure they cover.
Yeah, I think they're, we need a motion.
I will move to approve the architects and engineering contract for the fire station twenty-one Bentley Architects in the amount of three ninety-eight sixty-three and ninety-four cents.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve purchase order for construction manager at risk. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. McCree Design Builders, Inc. are the selected contractor to the, to insist or assist, excuse you, in the design of the final plans and specifications for the fire station twenty-one. Their assistance includes cost estimates of thirty, sixty, and ninety percent, and a guaranteed match price at the final design stage. They will also participate in the design to provide quality control, value engineering, and constructability evaluations. Staff would recommend approving purchase order for construction manager at risk, pre-construction services for the permanent fire station in the McCree Design Builders, Inc., in the amount of fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars, no thens, zeros, and so on. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? We're using the applesight. Using the average savings, happy to read it out. Any questions?
I guess if we're hiring the engineer to do all the drawings, design work, why are we go design build? The, there's definitely value in the C-MAR approach with the value engineering and the constructability section. They usually can offer better select products or methodology to build stuff, which is an overall cost savings. Say, you good with this?
All right.
I am good with it. You know, one of the benefits that the C-MAR group is going to provide is they're going to be working together with the engineer through the design process. And when it's all done, they will give us a guaranteed maximum price to construct this, so it's certainly an effort to control costs, so we can see value with that. We anticipate certainly seeing enough savings for the contractors. And hopefully a lot.
And I look at it as it's a chance to offload that responsibility to staff. You know, somebody who does it every day, otherwise you'd have to be pulled into all those, they just have to manage, or something, you know, some staff or something like that.
So they're going to keep the engineer architect from bold plating it so that the construction cost reduction.
We need a motion.
Move to approve the recommendation, the purchase order for the C-MAR for fire station 21 to McCree Builders, in the amount of $51,545.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All my favor signify this thing on.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve request for quote rankings and awarding for professional surveying services. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a request for quote from professional surveying services. On September 8th, we received four responses, which have been reviewed and ranked by staff. Based on the amount of survey work we have, we are recommending that all four of those surveyors be awarded contracts, so the staff would recommend approval and have the city attorney draft up agreements and the contracts for these surveyors. Have any answer questions?
I assume that you will start with your highest rated one each time, and then you can get to the sufficient time, then you will go to the next one and the next one until someone can
Yes, sir.
show up and do the work.
Yes.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Need a motion?
Move to approve RFQ 23-02 rankings and award continuing services for professional surveying services to Allen &amp; Company House, did I say that right? Allen &amp; S diversified an SMA survey in that eighth, and staff recommendations.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify this thing on.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve revised change order to settle the development and construction.
Sir, good evening. This is a change order that was originally approved on May 11th for $798,220. While discussing this change order as they went into construction, we've worked with the contractor, made some changes for constructability and safety. Those improvements unfortunately cost us a little more, $179,680.50. And when they started doing the work, there were sections of Marsh Road that were part of this change order, and then there were sections that were left out. So old pavement versus new pavement, and as you drive it, you could really see the difference when they had the first lift down. If you remember when we were doing the resurfacing for 22, 23, Marsh Road was originally included in that work order. We removed it so we could get all this done. We were going to come back and resurface it, but with them being out there now, it would be best if we did the whole thing at one time. So we would basically have brand new asphalt from Amalon Road to the now fourth roundabout on the west side. Move to approve the...
Wait a minute, I can probably run it a second time and make it happen.
Now let's get it all done at the same time.
I'll second that, okay.
I think, I agree. We want to get it, I just want to get it right and be one time. So I think we all agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
He's got some additional money he wants to add to.
Yeah. His asphalt.
I would include all the roundabouts as well, so you'd have it all, every turn lane and... Why don't you make the motion for, sir? I did a quick estimate. I don't have the cost yet for that additional area, but it should be under the cost that we had left over from the resurfacing projects. We shouldn't see an increase in what the resurfacing budget was. It was, we had a difference between what we spent and what we budgeted, $277,000. Do we add two together and go like $500,000 or less?
Yes.
All right. Move to approve that we go $500,000 less on this, and let staff work out to get a better deal.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Yes, sir.
But it didn't fit great the first time.
All those in favor signify this thing on.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Recommendation to approve special event at West Orange High School.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This is a special event request for West Orange High School's annual homecoming parade. It will be on Tuesday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. I will proceed the normal route down Plant Street from Dillard to Central and loop on the back. Streets will be closed at 2:00 p.m. that day. With that, staff recommends approval.
And I know there's no vehicles, but we have made an exception for Mr. Turner. I recall he gave us a second. I have my golf cart in there?
Yes.
Okay. Motion. Well, the principal call would say, you know.
Motion to approve a special event for October 10th, 2023, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify this thing on.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Board appointment.
Yes, sir. A board appointment is requiring to fill an expiring term for trustee on the general and employees pension board. That new term would expire September 30th of 2027. The commission-appointed trustee for this position is currently Gretchen Tobe, who has expressed her desire to continue serving this board. For your consideration, board appointment, interest applications were included in your agenda packet, and with that, staff would recommend approval of appointing one board member to the general employee pension board for a four-year term, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
Motion to reappoint Gretchen Tobe from District 1.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, will you, Mr. Tobe? Okay. All those in favor signify this thing on.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Matters from citizens of Winter Garden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Williams, Mr. Artman. My name is Norrie Dworkin. I'm the editor-in-chief of Fox Populi, wintergardenvox.com. I have a question that I've been unable, or my reporter has been unable to get an answer to regarding Tildenville. Is the city interested in annexing this? Is that even on the agenda? Is this something that you are considering at all?
We have, I can tell you. It's never, it's kind of, I don't know, before your time, John, but we have. It's never really been, never really worked out. Mayor, do you want to, do you have any comment?
No.
It just tried to do it in the past, and there's been discussions, but no formal application for anything.
I know this is something from my reporter's reporting that the residents are interested in.
Yeah. I think the residents are working with Commissioner Cole Worson, District 1. There have been a couple of meetings, but there's no, no formal application.
So this, the city is not making any overtures, not on the agenda?
When there's a formal application.
They have to apply.
Yeah, the ball's in the court right now.
County, county, we would work with the county, just like we did with Eastmore, the Eastmore Garden acquisition, but there's, there's been nothing, no progress made in that department.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Matter from city attorney.
Pass, Mayor. Thank you.
City manager.
Yes, sir. Just a few items. For the last several years, the city has participated in a blind taste test competition for tasty drinking water in central Florida, which is held at the annual lunch in front of the Florida section of American Water Works Association. That competition took place yesterday. There were 14 entries, and we took the honors and won in first place, and will now move on to the state competition. Certainly want to send special recognitions to David Jones, our chief operator, all our utility operators, public service staff, and utility workers that makes, that work so hard in providing the highest quality and delicious water for our business residents and visitors.
I'll toast to that.
Couple of special bits announcement. This Saturday, September 30th, Sonic Lodge is going to host the Hottest Wheels Golf Cart Event. This is a private event that's being held on their property. Just giving you a fly, as you may see some additional golf cart traffic in downtown. We have required them to fence off that area. They have been required to hire off-duty officers to help maintain control in terms of parking, making sure that they're not parking in the rideways, blocking the roadway, that the number of entries has been limited. Tuesday, October 3rd, we have National Night Out Event at the Farmers Market Pavilion from 6:00 to 9:00. Wednesday, October 4th, it's Plant at Pink Tababoya True Giveaway at the Park Garden from 9:00 to 2:00. And Tuesday, October 10th, as you just approved, the West Orange High School Homecoming Parade. Wednesday, October 11th, is the Flores Fiesta, which is hosted by the Bloomberg Society, and that's going to be for one hour between 4:00 and 5:00 at Butterfly Park. And lastly, Saturday, Saturday, October 14th, Spooky Sprint 5K Race in Open Park from 3:00 to 9:00.
Yes.
I would like to take a moment to introduce Veronica Spooner. She's sitting in the back. She is our new senior business analyst. She filled the vacancy with March Promotion to Economic Development Director, and she's been with us for a little over a week now. I mean, she's doing a great job, so just wanted to take a moment.
Where did you get her from? From Veronica.
She had come out of the corporate world. I think she was doing some consulting work, did some work from with Disney for a while. She is a Winter Garden resident, so I think her commute is a lot shorter.
Welcome aboard. Welcome.
And lastly, I want to recognize Laura and all of our staff for the outstanding job they've done in preparation for this year's budget, and as always, they've just made my life so much easier in preparation for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Newell? Just echo those comments to Laura and your post staff. It was a great year on the budget, a lot of consideration. Thank you, thank you for answering my questions. Very much appreciate it. Excellent year. Nice job.
Okay.
Commissioner? I wanted to thank Laura and staff. Just really, binders are amazing. It saves a lot of questions. It makes our job easier, so thank you very much, and you and staff. Appreciate it.
Mr. Sherman?
I must thank Mr. Monahan for getting the patchwork taken care of.
I have a couple of things. Lake of Pockton Natural Gas asked me to mention that Week of October 1st through the 7th is Public National Gas Week to honor all the workers that work in natural gas and what they provide to the communities and the safety thereof. Next, I'd like to recognize some of our people at Jesse Brock Center. The other day, I went by some fire truck, a rescue truck there, found out that a lady that was taking a class in air gas had passed out, and our people, the rec, went right to work to help her. Carol Ducklauer raced and made sure they called 911. They took care of her lady there. They grabbed the AED and went to her because she had passed out. Chris McCourt, same thing upon hearing. He rushed there with, respised him, and Mike Bennett, and then Jackie and Mathis, no, and Derek Fisher then rushed in there to help follow the situation and take care of her, but she was okay. But it was quite, quite a reaction from our staff, immediately knowing what to do, handling it, keeping everybody calm, keeping people away until our first responders. Of course, they got there quick, and we're grateful for that. So with that, I'd like to recognize them and tell them thank you. Another first responder was from a Winter Garden resident. It wasn't Winter Garden First Responders, it was Orange County, but he just said, keep your cell phones and be thankful we have the first responders that we have. He had some physical issues. He was on a, in the elevator at Woodland, and it stopped, and he was panicking, but they got there and guided him out quickly. So with that, we're blessed to have such good first responders in our area, and we thank you for all that you do. And then one last time for Laura and her staff. What a great job they did on the, on the budget, and we do appreciate it. With that, we'll adjourn.